Good evening, let's call the scene to order. Please rise to salute our flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, in the individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Coming to this act, this meeting has been advertised for you through law posted in legal newspapers, out of honor of running the Retrospect, and by posting same on the voting board of the municipal building. June, we have roll call, please. Yes, roll call from you.
Bingham?
Here.
Dickinson?
Here.
Bushian?
Here.
Pachaski? Fullerton?
Here.
Walterly?
Here.
Gunn?
Here.
Calavis?
Here.
Capadas?
Here.
Atrius?
Here.
And Over.
Here.
Babe Rowan?
Here.
And Brian Hall.
Here.
At this point in time, let's turn the meeting over to the solicitor for reorganization period of meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Mr. Chairperson, do we have any new members or members that are going to be sworn in for the 2014 term?
Yes, Mr. Rowan, myself, Mr. Dickinson, Mr. Gunn, and Mr. Over.
Mr. Gunn, Mr. Rowan, yes, that you've just come forward and we can swear you in. Okay, you're just going to repeat after me. If I talk too fast, you're going to slow me down, okay? You're going to state your name, I, state your name.
I.
Okay, do solemnly swear.
Sowfully swear.
That I will uphold the laws and constitution.
The laws and constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the state of New Jersey.
State of New Jersey.
And I will perform my duties.
And I will perform my duties.
As a member of the Runnymede zoning and planning board.
As a member of the Runnymede zoning and planning board.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to open up the initial nomination for chairperson for calendar year 2014 to serve as the chairperson for the Borough of Runnymede Planning and Zoning Board. Do I have any nominations? A nominee, can you see Hammer?
I'll second that nomination.
Okay, do we have any other nominations?
Move nominations.
Okay, we have a roll call. Thanks, can we have a roll call vote as to the election and appointment of Candy Clayhammer as the chairperson for Borough of Runnymede Planning and Zoning Board for calendar year 2014?
Clayhammer?
Epstein.
Dickinson?
Epstein.
Bushian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Pachaski? Jackson? Fullerton?
I get a badge.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Yes.
Over?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I turn the call over to you and we'll continue with nominations for vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. I'd like to open the nomination for vice chairman. I'd like to nominate Mr. Dickinson.
Second.
Any other nominations for vice chairman? Move the nomination for vice chairman. June, may I have a roll call, please?
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Yes.
And Over.
Yes.
I would like to now appoint the secretary for the year 2014. I would like to put into nominations June Elkins.
Mr. Marsha.
Motion made second. Is there any other nominations for planning board secretary? Nomination being closed. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bushian. May I roll call, please?
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Yes.
Over.
Yes.
Congratulations, June, and thank you for your job well done, as always. Hope that our turn. Okay. We now move to appoint our solicitor. We have received a proposal from Mr. Rowan. Mr. Rowan looked over all of our meetings in the year of 2013. I think he did a wonderful job. His race all remained the same. And he does have another gentleman with his firm that in case that he cannot be here, that will appear in his absence, which is Mr. David Carlemere. So I would like to put in the name of Mr. David Rowan, our solicitor.
Second.
Motion made second. Is there any other names to add in for solicitor? Okay, motion made seconded, the nomination to close. Roll call, please.
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Thank you for the continued confidence that you have in myself and my office. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the wonderful job you did. All right, we now move to the appointment of our planning board engineer, Mr. Pettit. Could not deal with this this evening, but his, Pettit and Associates have been serving the Runnymede Planning and Zoning Board for ten years consecutively, and they've been doing a fine job. This evening, Brian is attending in Mr. Pettit's absence. And again, we've had occasion for Brian to look over our proceedings in part of these with his duties as well. So I'd like to put the name of Mr. John Pettit and Associates in for our planning board engineer. Motion made seconded, Pettit and Associates. Is there any other nominations for planning zoning board engineer?
Move nominations.
Second.
Motion made seconded, nominations for planning board engineer being closed. June, may I have a roll call, please?
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Yes.
Congratulations, Brian. We pass all our roll wishes to Mr. Pettit. Thank you for everything you do for the work you do. All right, the next thing we would like to do is have an approval of the minutes for the December 11th meeting. Any questions on the minutes?
Mr. Chairperson, we have another resolution regarding the appointment of our ordinance.
Okay.
And our, just a resolution regarding the meeting dates and official newspapers.
Yep.
In conformity to open the meetings.
Do you prefer to do that before the minutes? I have, I have voted those things. Do you want to do the meetings before the minutes?
Well, why don't we do Anthony and Bill as the ordinance? We have, I think, a first ordinance member, Mr. Atrius, and a second ordinance member, Mr. Over.
Yes.
If you want to vote on that for him.
That's correct. Okay, um, need a roll call on that? Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, roll call.
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Bushian? Yes.
Pachaski? Jackson? Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
In.
And the latest would be the appointment of our newspaper and our dates, the schedule will be attached to the resolution.
You want to just read that, June? You have to talk to the appointment of the newspaper. We make nomination that we, that we make our newspaper the Retrospect as our official newspaper?
The whole thing, yes?
No. Okay, roll call, please.
Clayhammer?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Fullerton?
Yes.
Walterly?
Yes.
Gunn?
Yes.
Calavis?
Yes.
Capadas?
Yes.
Atrius?
Yes.
Okay, the notice of the annual scheduled meetings is hereby given. This is the regular meetings, including the reorganization meeting will be January 14th to 2015. All such meetings will be held at 7:00 PM unless otherwise indicated at the Runnymede Borough Hall, 24 North Black Forest Place, Runnymede, New Jersey. Meeting dates are followed. February 12th, 2014, March 12th, 2014, April 9th, 2014, May 14th, 2014, June 11th, 2014, July 9th, 2014, August 13th, 2014, September 10th, 2014, October 8th, 2014, November 12th, 2014, and December 10th of 2014. And again, reward in 2015 on January 14th. Does that be a matter of record?
I move the nomination, the ordinance be spread month to month.
Okay. Everybody got that? Any else want to do there, Mr. Rowan, before we go to the minutes?
No, I think reorganization has been completed.
Well, good. Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the minutes of the December 11th, 2013 meeting? Now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the 2011, I'm sorry, December 11th, 2013 meeting. Second? Okay. All those in favor? All right, the first application we're going to hear this evening on our new business is an application at 601 East Eastham Road, applicant is Gamel Gaming. You must come forward and introduce yourself.
This application, hey, Brian, how you doing? Is for interpretation of our, of whether or not the intended use by the applicant would be a permitted use within our, could be interpreted as being a permitted use within our zoning ordinance. It is not a designated permitted use. It's not a use that is, I equitatively said that they can't be there, but they ask for interpretation to that. Now, you have the right to add your testimony to make a determination that it would be a permitted use, or you can make a determination that you want to treat it as a used variance and have them, have them come back.
Do you want myself in there to say?
Um, you're not really, since you're, they're not asking for a used variance, it's just an interpretation, I believe that you can, without Brian's objection, I think you could participate.
You're allowed to stay?
You're allowed to stay, okay? Because we're not going to use variance.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson. Members of board, for your record, Brian Luzo, on behalf of the applicant, Gamel Gaming LLC. With me this evening is the sole member, principal of Gamel Gaming, Christine Beitman, as well as our traffic consultant, the Anna Drum, if you'd like to square that in at this time.
Yes, folks, would you please raise your right hand? You swear affirm in testimony. You're going to give this board tonight's crucial act to the best of your knowledge.
Yes.
As a procedural matter, I have both the original affidavit of publication as well as tax payment certification and certified, so I'm going to request that the board accept your statement at our spot.
The affidavit video is called the pure of the, pure of the order.
Briefly, the property is identified as 601 East Eastham Road. The cross intersection would be Hartford Road. It's otherwise known as Hartford Plaza, which consists of eight retail units within existing commercial strip center, three of which are currently vacant. My client intends to occupy approximately 5,000 square feet of the site formerly occupied by the righty. Our proposal this evening essentially comprises three separate terms of relief that we're requesting of the board. First would be site plan waiver, which I believe we meet the criteria under section 331-54. Again, there are no exterior improvements or construction proposed. This is an existing facility, including its existing store owner management facilities. Next, we're requesting a change of commercial use approval. That would be under section 395-21C1 of your ordinance, as well as 395-21D4. Essentially, there's an existing ordinance. Whenever there is a change in commercial use from one use to a new use, we are required to secure approval from the board prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or in our case, a voting permit. And lastly, we are requesting an interpretation from the board that my client's proposed use, which is a retail commercial gaming facility, would in fact be recognized as a permitted commercial use under your ordinance. I think everyone would agree that this is a very unique niche use, not recognized by most ordinances in the state of New Jersey. For that reason, it's not uncommon where a particular commercial zone omits or does not recognize certain commercial uses. That would otherwise be contemplated within which those uses that are approved, which your engineer outlined in his review letter. With respect to the existing facility, there are 117 existing parking spaces. Under your current zoning ordinance or parking requirements, there's a requirement of one space for every 400 square feet of building space. The existing building is roughly 28,000 square feet. That would generate a parking requirement of approximately 70 spaces. The existing site has onsite 117 spaces. So we respectfully submit that parking would be sufficient. And at the board of professional questions, Ms. Drum would be available to answer those questions. With respect to the actual use, again, this is a very unique use. I do have a pamphlet that was provided by my client, which I'd be happy to distribute to Mr. Rowan, if you don't mind. Along with the existing site plan, we provided the architectural plans, what the interior renovations will comprise. There will be substantial interior renovations proposed to accommodate the commercial gaming request. My client intends to offer numerous video gaming platforms. That would include Xbox, Playstation, and other gaming facilities, including arcade style games, which are recognized in the plan, for ski ball, basketball, and driving experience games. Now, with respect to the actual use, it's anticipated that the initial employees will be three and the proposed hours tend to be our schedule for approximately 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM weekdays and 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on the weekends. With hours to adjust if school is off because this will obviously be geared toward teenagers and adults that utilize long game. Thought we'd have to entertain any questions from the board. Yeah.
You said Monday through Friday, three to ten?
Yes.
Saturday?
Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
Will there be any retail at all in the store? Will you be selling anything?
No.
Other than, one of the questions was whether we provided food and beverage. The answer is no exception, that there will be vending machines provided inside.
Are you going to provide for an area for like birthday parties of that nature?
Down along the line, that's not just going to start. But down along the line, that's something that they have.
We have a feature rearrange, right? Down the end of your plan, it's a, it's a unique thing to do when you have to begin. We have a lot of kids in this town, so, you know, we're certainly happy to have a nice place for them to go, for sure.
What sort of vending machines?
Yes. Do we need no counter service up through the ice cream?
I know all the games are vending machines.
They're all point operated?
Yes.
So any more questions? Did you ask that again?
The question was, with respect to the games, will they be point operated?
And you said you're going to have, is it three employees per shift, man?
Yes.
Was the maximum occupancy?
I believe it would be approximately 150 based on the square footers that we have thus far.
Restroom, is that what you mean there?
Yes. As part of the foundation plan, it does provide for a schematic of the proposed layout. There will be restroom facilities, there is a separate room that's proposed as a tournament room, which could be, I guess, used for parties, but the intention is to have specialized tournaments for several of the games.
Anything from the professionals?
No, so Brian educated his application, he asked for interpretation. It doesn't, regarding waivers, it doesn't look like he's requesting to expand the building by, you know, more than 10% or planning to increase the lost reparten by more than 10%. So if you, if you determined that it was a appropriate use, that it was, or it was, it would be an intended sort of use in that district, you know, a waiver would, could file for any form of same claim. I believe that to Brian, I think Brian would concuss.
Right, yeah, right now, we haven't done any formal review of the site plan at all. We really need to know the interpretation of the board as far as the property.
Well, is there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Luzo? In your application, you made reference to waivers from chapter on, on the barcode at 395-21. You made reference to C and D, and 21C is fire code, parentheses, one, and 21D is paren open, front, close, front, four. What part of the code is that making reference there?
That D4 is a specific requirement in your ordinance that whenever you have a change of commercial use from a righty to any other use other than a drugstore, you're required to submit and secure approval from the board. The zoning officer does not have the ability to issue that approval directly. The requirement is to come before the board. The primary intent of that ordinance, as most ordinances, would be to address any site plan deficiencies or issues. Once again, we're requesting a site plan waiver because we have a fully built out site. The only approval we're seeking from the board other than an interpretation is a waiver of any site plan requirements and to secure the CL approval or chain of use approval that's required in your ordinance.
The parking lot, you made reference to all the parking spaces?
Yes, at present, as far as the site, there's an existing 28,000 square foot brick and mortar building, and there's existing 117 parking spaces.
Also shared by the dollar store, shared by the tax?
Correct.
Shared by the mail salon?
Each of, each of the eight units, or total eight units in the existing building, we will occupy one unit. Under your zoning ordinance, the parking requirement for the 28,000 square foot building would generate a parking requirement of 70 spaces. We exceed that by approximately 47 spaces.
Now, within the meets and bounds of the lot that you propose the development, is the parking lot within the meets and bounds of the property you intend to renovate?
Yes. Everything is pre-existing and fully built out.
About 20 feet, maybe 30 feet from those meets and bounds is the center line between Gloucester Township and the Borough of Runnymede. And I don't see where anybody in Gloucester Township would notify, or Township would notify.
With all due respect, that's not true. In our affidavit of service, I secured a Mr. Property Owner from Gloucester Township, and any property owner that was identified by the Gloucester Township head assessor was notified.
I have a few, I can't.
I don't have a copy of everybody.
I have, I have the affidavit of service.
But that's proof, that's your proof of service? Is it the profile?
Mr. Rowan, just verify.
Yeah, it's submitted to me before. I didn't go over every requirement, they were just submitted. But from the affidavit of service that was made, it looks like he listed the, he made service to everyone that was on the list provided by the Borough of Runnymede. Was there a list from?
There is, the list from Gloucester Township.
Okay, yeah, there is a list of property owners in Gloucester Township also.
Hey, I was just seeing if I had it here as well.
How about Township or Gloucester Township? Yeah, they were. Looking, I, when I looked at the map of the survey and dead TS engineering.
Yes.
I was going to the fact that it's not sealed or it's not signed, and it's nine or five or six year old.
Well, again, that was the site plan that was approved, previously approved by the board. We are making no changes whatsoever since by way of exterior improvements, change in lighting, landscaping, nor parking. As everything existed, we are required to come before the board whenever there, again, there is a change of use proposed, which is what we are proposing this evening. The only revisions or renovations that are proposed, concern the interior of the existing unit. No change whatsoever. No whatsoever.
At this point in time, there, there really has some for interpretation. There is no checklist submission requirement, so at this point in time, they, they provided information before their use of the building. So as far as the silent seal survey, it's really not necessary, although, you know, we'd like to have it, but it's not necessary at this given time. At the time of use variance or site plan review, that's all we have to checklist, completeness review, and they would have to supply that.
The reason I ask is, is it's a deviation from what I'm, usually use to say, with something signed, something sealed.
No, I understand, and that, we would certainly agree that that were a condition on the board. But again, we are requesting a site plan waiver considering that in our opinion, we meet the criteria, which is outlined, for the repeal of site plan waiver. We are not increasing the buildings, we are not increasing the parking requirements, or any other exterior renovations or additions are proposed at this time.
But remember, Brian's asking, he wants to know if a used variance is going to be required.
Right.
And if it is, then that triggers where they would have to submit a more formal submission.
Right. Um, it's, it's really been our practice, you should listen to this, you probably will though, whenever there is a deviation from a defined permitted use, we do like to have a used variance. What that does is that enables the applicant to notify formally all the people that there will be a change of use, give them an opportunity to come in and speak on the matter about the used variance. I think everybody up here is very business friendly, and we think you have a nice plan here. However, it's, it is not a permitted use, and it's always, not always, it's typically been our practice to try to have our professionals go and do a checklist for us. That's the focus for us to be here, and do a checklist for us, and just to bring anything to our attention. I haven't been inside the righty for probably eight years, you know, when it closed up, and nothing, I'd like to see better than that, that building filled with kids. I would love to see that. But I haven't been inside that building in whatever, or been five, six, seven years to close, and I have no idea what the condition of the building is, how it's, you know, how you're, I see you're. and I have no idea what the condition of the building is, how it's, you know, how your, I see your, your site plans that you render here, but we're not going to be able to get into the site plan until we decide whether we need a use variance, and, you know, it is not a permitted use under our ordinance. And we do like to see our professionals go in there, do a checklist, bring us up to speed on any deficiencies or any changes that they might deem necessary, as well as letting us see your site plan, to see what your intentions are, if you want to get a fair and equitable plan together for the town and for the applicant. And if we don't do that, then we basically, once you walk out of here, we have really no idea, you know, what exactly is going to go there, and, you know, we try to take a very proactive stand on, on what we want to have in the town, and, and, you know, against hours of operation, and, you know, all that good stuff. And we would like to, maybe myself am not a one person, but I do, I do like to see, you know, our professionals go in and bring, and bring us back a checklist, and, and see everything that he, that he's been inside the building, he's seen everything. I know you're not making any major exterior site plan changes, I understand, maybe some solid signage and whatnot, but, you know, I think it's something that myself, I'd probably like to see our professionals go in and take a look inside the building, and.
Is that typical for us to inspect the inside of a building?
No, that, that's the other side of the building, that would be.
Mr. Mike, yeah.
More, more of a building. Me, me, it would just be the outside of the site.
That was my, that was gonna be my question, and I understand the site plan, because they're not changing the property. So that's why I'm wondering, what could be possibly changed? And I think it's important to understand, Rite Aid has only been out of the property for possibly six months. This has not been a property that has been big and poor a number of years. That coupled with the fact there, there are five other tenants that currently occupy this facility. I appreciate the chairperson's comments, however, the municipal land use law, under forty, fifty-five D, seventy D, specifically permits, recognizes, and authorizes powers of the board to interpret a particular zoning ordinance. It is the rare ordinance which fully encompasses every contemplated use that would be permitted, particularly, in particular, in a particular zoning district, in this case, the commercial zoning district. It's our position respectfully that the retail gaming center falls within those number of uses that are currently recognized. If the board were to grant such an interpretation, I don't believe my client would have any objection to submitting a site plan application and a sealed plan, where the board, and particularly the professionals, could more clearly examine the property and, at a different time.
They will be hopefully in here tonight with a use variance waiver and come back with a site plan for our approval?
Well, essentially, if the board were inclined to grant the interpretation that our gaming center is a permitted use within a commercial district, and we would submit a sealed plan and request a site plan review or waiver at a separate meeting. And again, I think that would provide your professionals, particularly your engineer, with additional time to do an analysis of the facility.
That, that sounds fine, fine to me, I just, I just want us, I want us to be involved in anything that's going on right now.
Understood.
I want us to be involved in, I want us to have a hand in it, and I couldn't be happier than the guys are going in, but I do want us to have a hand in it, so.
So.
Any other questions?
If the board were inclined, we'd amend our application to solely seek an interpretation of the use, of deferring to a later date the site plan waiver and change of use.
To a later date?
But did you want a determination now, tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Or solely on the use, otherwise this is entirely different, as far as a use variance application.
So we do have time, Mr. Ryan, we'll be able to.
Yeah, the board, I mean, I agree with Brian, and I represent other, other towns, and you, you, no ordinance can do an exhaustive itemization of what would be permitted. So then it becomes the home upon the board to make a determination. Yes, if we were to review this, or if this was to be looked at again, would these type of facilities be a permitted use? I mean, you could have, somebody could come in and, I guess, ask for, to have a cooking school there. Well, it's, there's, it's not, one is permitted use, I mean, because you just can't cover everything.
So we'll be able to waive the, I would like to.
Well, you could make the interpretation and say, yes, we believe it would be a permitted use, or it would, it would be granted a permitted use status, but we would like to have maybe a review of.
Subject to site plan.
Yeah, subject to a site plan review, yeah.
That's the best of both worlds, I think.
Well, the question I had to the board, I guess, and I wanted to know, maybe, the residents would be typically, as the residents of any of this one, even though it's in a forum. That's the question that, I don't think myself or the mayor thought we would be involved in this, because of the use issue. And I did read the ordinance ahead of time, and I agree, it doesn't outline every single thing. You know, I'm, it doesn't specifically say it, I, I don't know, that's, I'm teasing because I don't know.
It's silent.
The word things, it's silent. It is a big retail shopping center, that's why I asked certain things. It's not a little residential neighborhood.
Well, I think, I think if we, I think if we're able to have a hand in the site plan of it, I think, I think that we will be able to address any concerns we would have at that, at that juncture. They will be coming back for a site plan approval, maybe next month or whatever, and.
What is that, a commercial district, is that what you were saying, Prince of Patriots, it is a commercial district?
We just want to be able to have a hand in exactly, you know, everything that's going to be, you know, going in there. And if there's any questions?
There's no online gambling or anything that would be.
They just say online game, I didn't hear them say online game. It's, it's not, but it's different.
The name is game and game.
Yeah.
For you, with this interpretation, anything that's not on your.
Are you gonna get with your battles? Anything on, that wouldn't be on there, Anthony, would always be that's subject to the interpretation of whether it would be. Or a board could say, no, it's, you know, there, there should be a use variance. That's, that's in your, that's what he's made an application, saying to the board, board, would you make a determination to, is this, would this have been, if you could list everything in the world, would this been one of the ones, something, a gaming or a recreational facility or, or whatever, would that have been a permitted use in your commercial district?
Right, would you, so would you like to restate his revised request of us, so we can have a full call vote?
Well, I think we ought to open it up to the public, because they were noticed, and, you know, to get, to get the public's input. And then the, the motion would be that you, you, I would suggest that somebody on the board put it on the record that, you know, you've heard testimony, and you believe that this is, is an acceptable use in your commercial district. And then you would, you know, you'd vote on that determination.
All right, this is brought to mind, I'd like to open the meeting up to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only, from one corner and we heard, this matter only, okay? No, hold on, hold on, my microphone please. Hold on, turn off the phone, please, name and address, please. I'm sorry.
I think this is a terrible idea, and I'll tell you why I think it's a terrible idea.
I didn't, didn't, I didn't even name an address.
Oh, I barely thought it, I live at three thirty-one Sunny Brook Road. I think it's a terrible idea, so I'm gonna tell you what, are you the one that wants to do this?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is why it's a terrible idea.
I think, you talk in the mic, please.
I think that this area, this, what is it, Rite Aid, is that where they're gonna put it in? Would be better served as some kind of a youth center. And this is, I don't think these video games are productive. I think all they represent is some kind of violence for young kids, all kinds of crazy attractions, whereas if you had a youth center, kids could learn music, they could learn art, they could do all kinds of different things, it could be more educational. I don't think this is gonna be good, I think kids are gonna be, kids are gonna be there without their parents, they're gonna be drinking, they're gonna be drugging, they're gonna be hanging out with their cigarettes in front, nobody's gonna be able to park. I, I have a handicap sticker, if there's, where I go to Image Nail, that's the only handicap place that I can park, I don't know about my dollar store, I don't know. But I think it's a very poor idea, I don't think this will serve the community at all. I think if you do it, you're gonna be sorry. And I have been, I taught from first grade into community college, and I know what students are like, and I know what kids do. And there's no way you can tell me that sixteen-year-olds, fifteen-year-olds are gonna be just, okay, I'll see you dad, mom, I'm gonna go there. It's not a good idea, it really does not serve, it's not productive at all. You really need to think very seriously about this, and think about, once you say yes, then you have said yes, and that's it. And then people are gonna start saying, well, this is a terrible idea. And you have, you have Image Nail, you know, kid over there with his wife, pretty popular, you know where it is? Image Nail.
Yeah, it's in the same.
You know where it is?
Yeah, where the text was.
Yeah, and there's the dollar store, and then there's a hair place on those one to the ice down there. How are those people gonna, how are, how are they gonna do, they have their, all their customers, how are they gonna withstand all this going on? Think about that, what about Acme? What about all those older people like myself going to Acme? Think about it, how are they gonna like this with all this going on in the corner? I think we should do something, but I don't think that's what we should do. You know, I'm, I'm really sorry, okay, I just, I went down and I talked to him, I did go down and talk to him. I just go down and talked to Kevin Londo, the two people there, and they said they were gonna have some kind of a concession, and I asked them, well, what's really going on? Because I was concerned, because the man who does my nails told me about it, so I said, I'm going down there. They said, oh, no, it's gonna be a family thing, you'll see, all these family games, everything's gonna be great, blah, blah, blah. I said, oh, yeah, right, they're gonna have some kind of a concession, you know, when they do these caterings, and they're gonna have this concession. I said, all right, and I just said, yeah, well, we'll see, but I'm, I'm telling you, this is not a good idea. Seriously, once you do it, that's it. And then it's gonna be all of this, oh my god, what have I done? They gotta do things serious about it, not, I have nothing against you at all, but I think, I'm gonna go. But I'm just saying that it's, if you wanna do something for the youth in Runnymede, you should think of something more educational, think of the arts, and don't say, ah, art, just not, everything. You can do all sorts of things, and kids might really thrive on it, and they might really love it, you just have to plan it out. And I am an artist and a painter, and I've taught for many years, and I'd be more than happy to help you with some of that. And I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community who know other things about the art, who know things about music, and maybe dance or something else, but wouldn't that be better for your kids?
Well, unfortunately, we have an application in front of us, that is, the application is in front of us, so I, I can't really.
What's that mean?
The applicant to, to speak on, if, you know, I, we have an application in front of us that we are looking at at this point in time.
And the application, what does that really mean, saying, what's that mean?
Well, everything that this applicant would like to do at Game or Gaming is really.
I know, but don't you, don't you have, whether you say yes or no, or no, you have no, you can just do it?
We can, we can only tell them if we interpret it as a permitted use, it's, it's not like we can.
Stop it.
We have police departments to take care of, you know, if there's loitering and things of that nature. I mean, there's, there's facilities in place that are not within our scope view. You know, the public safety officers in this town were notified of this application, and they were asked to submit any problems, or I would say, you know, questions that they had with this application, and nor the chief of police or the fire department has any concerns that they could not substantiate, you know, some controls and whatnot, if this were to be granted. So, another way. The notice was all on the police department, they control, loitering, control, you know, if there's kids outside drinking, I mean, that's not something we can, we can't, we can't deny or approve an application based upon if someone might sit out front of a pizzeria and drink a beer. We, we can't, that's not gonna perjure it for a section. All we can do is adhere to the letter of the law and say, is this a permitted use? Are they within their legal limitations to ask us to allow them to do this? If they are permitted to do this, and there's a problem with this, there are factions in place that can address that. You know, they, they, you know, there are things that could be done after the fact, I mean, if there's a problem, you know, when we do the, we do the site plan, you know, that's, that's one of the things, you know, when we do the site plan, we can ask them what hours of operations we would like them to operate. For instance, we did another, last year, the vault came in, and we gave them a one-year, I wanna say probationary period, that we said, okay, you wanna put a restaurant with liquor license above the residential area, and we saw his prior restaurants, they were beautiful, they did a really nice job on them, but we said, listen, Dean, we're gonna put your feet to the fire a little bit, and we're gonna say, if you wanna do outdoor dining, it has to be this, and he pulled that back, because it was above the residential areas, okay? If you want to be open, we'd like to see you only be open this late, okay? He wanted to be open later, but he said to us, okay, I understand, kid, I'll give you a year, there's no problems, I'd like to come back here and ask if I could open an hour later. So there are things that we can put in place, as a board, when we review their site plan, and I, I appreciate all of your concerns, but by the same token, I certainly can't set somebody up to fail and, and say that I am sure that this place is going to be a detriment to society without giving it a chance. We, you know, we have police officers and things that are just for that purpose, you know, to come in and say, you know, man, you know, Mrs. Beakman, you have too many kids outside, this, this can't happen, and then that's when the police have jurisdiction, we don't have jurisdiction over that. So I'm wanting to thank you for excusing any of your comments, but there's always so much that we can base our voting on. And what might happen, you know, we have to rely on the police and stuff of that nature for matters of, you know, loitering and stuff. We still have to determine if it's a permitted use, we still have to make the determination.
And you're still gonna determine whether they can actually go ahead and.
Well, first we have to determine if it's permitted.
Permitted, and then if it is permitted, then you're gonna say.
Then we would maybe, we would put stipulations on.
And how do you, how do you determine if it's permitted, what you do?
We're gonna listen to the audience right now.
Oh, so is it us that determines you?
It's a good argument.
Oh, they, they do, okay, I'm just.
I'm just trying to answer your, I'm trying to answer some of your, your concerns, you know, I want you to know that the police have been notified of this application, and we're trying to slip it in, they've been, they, they have the application, and they know what this applicant's proposing, and as in every application, you know.
Okay, maybe the police had other things to do, rather than sit around and monitor kids that are outside the park, hey, maybe there's other things that the police can do, water the community, I don't know. Anyway, thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Mark Cal, I live at four oh seven Sheffield Court. My home is directly behind the end of Montello's right now. And, you know, I had determined, you're not in the residential area, okay? Yeah, that property behind us is non-commercial, okay? But you got, you're gonna have a noise factor with, I mean, all you gotta do is look at the amount of teenagers that drive cars to go to train, and realize they're gonna leave school, and probably if they don't have jobs, go right there for a hangout. That's what it's gonna turn out to be, and I don't think we have enough police to police it properly. I don't know if your plan is security of your own.
Yes, there is security.
Wanna be guarded, that's what I mean by security.
Yes.
It, it's, it's, I believe detrimental to the neighborhood. Any place I've noticed this type of business is really been in a non-residential area, okay? And, you know, I don't know how you consider it, when you're at Redwood Street, and that's strictly residential in that area. We're right behind it, and we all know the proposal to put an additional townhouse. We're right behind it, and we all know the proposal to put an additional townhouses, okay? So I think it's going to create traffic problems, noise level problems. I think, and I agree with the previous speaker, that, you know, drugs are going to probably enter into it. It's inevitable anytime you have a problem. And we're going to draw people, not just from Runnymede, you know? They're going to come from Magnolia, they're going to come from wherever around here, like the world as well. And, you know, the business won't survive if they don't draw from a great area. So I just have a lot of concern about problems with the young people.
Okay, well, Frank, again, we're, we are bound by the, the law, and this, as much as it does, are but residential. It is a zoning commercial. And there's only so many places that this whole list of uses is permitted. That's in the commercial district, that's the only place they could go. They can't, by choice, they, they can't go, you know, anyplace else but a commercial district.
I appreciate...
That's in the master plan, that's already been determined. Um, that's, that's important, and again, it's not within our purview up here to, to change, you know? We, we have, you know...
I understand that. Possibly what you could do is have a contingency clause. If the approvals are accepted, and they proceed with this. If in six months there's been a lot of problems, then they're going to close the area.
Well, we, we can't place...
If not six months, one year.
We can't, we can't place those kind of clauses on that. But again, you know, unfortunately, that, that's not within our purview. We, we have a police department, and we have, you know, enforcement in place.
Our police department in the evening consists of what, two cars?
I couldn't answer that question, sir.
Well, I know it's very late in the evening in our police department, okay? And I, I've had occurrences where people called for police in Runnymede at nighttime, and they wind up having to wait for somebody to come from one side, or somebody to come from whatever that other area over there near Glen Oaks is. You know, it, it's ridiculous to say that you're going to control this. If you have one policeman one at nighttime in a car, and one policeman in here that takes calls or something, then, you know, who's going to be? I, I just think it's detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Frank, thank you. Any others? Yes, sir.
John McReffrey, 415 Sheffield Court. I'm within seventy-five feet of the Rite Aid. I'm right at the end of Sheffield Court, the old Rite Aid building is at the end. I'm concerned like what Frank said about noise. Now, the building want to be soundproof. Ever walk by an arcade in the mall?
Yes.
Loud, right? I don't want to be sitting in my house, my kitchen windows, and listening to rat-tat-tat-tat-tat all day. I understand there's noise ordinances, there's loitering ordinances and everything like that there. But it's not affecting men, not anybody, it's affecting we the most. Frank's saying, "Not in my backyard." But I heard a couple of statements where, "Well, it's not in a residential area." And there is stipulations for commercial properties that are made in a borough of Runnymede, stipulating that within two hundred feet of a resi- a residence. Yeah, I'm seventy-five feet from that building.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your...
I said this, in some of the commercial district rules, there are stipulations for stuff. It isn't allowed in Runnymede.
Bumpers aren't...
Well, again, if, if where something's in a strictly commercial area, it's allowed. But if it's within two hundred feet of a residence, it's not allowed.
Um, I'm not familiar with that, sir, you know, I was with you.
Oh, it, that's the parking, running trucks. There, there's all kinds of stuff within two hundred feet. There's certain things, if, like you said, it's not in a residential area, it's in my backyard.
Sir, I didn't mean, I live on Sunny Brook Road.
No, I understand.
It is a commercial problem. And I'm glad to hear from the residents. You see, I, I have my opinion, but I, it has to be formulated by your input too. That's why you're here to talk about it.
No, that's what I'm saying.
And I, I appreciate what you're saying, because you are starting to make me consider that there are some things that we, we may, we might have to reconsider.
No, that's all right.
But again, we're up here right now making the determination if it's a permitted use.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
You know, and I don't know how the rest of the board is starting to feel. Uh, you know, this board has the ability to, to make this come formally for a use space.
Right.
To give the residents a watch.
Now, global couldn't make it tonight. At the end of Sheffield Court, on 415. That building is twenty-five feet from my fence. There's the driveway in the back.
I know very much.
Okay, great, well, it's my brown house here. It's the, both the townhouse with the cyclone, the stockade fence, but... I'm just wondering, so there's going to be three people, three employees in there. Now, I hope it's not the rooster garden and hen house. You want adults, I don't want nineteen-year-old kids supervising the store. What's going to happen? More than everybody. No, now, getting with food, we were told when that building went up, there's going to be no food. The first one that went up, Mondello's, I heard say there's going to be, I imagine they're going to sell pizza, or soda, and hot dogs, and whatever. No, no food at all?
Vending machines.
Well, vending, trash?
Vending.
Okay. Right, now, I...
Interior trash, yes.
Okay. What is, what, food trash? Since that restaurant, when it, not, I moved there February nineteen seventy-nine, it was still a lot. Went to all the zoning boards, meetings, and everything like that there, the battle meetings. No restaurant, we got a restaurant. I mean, raccoons, possums, squirrels, what? Nine hundred million animals run up and down Barkford Drive. Because that restaurant's got a low dumpster, I'm going to go to follow the regular meeting to open that one. It's only about three foot high. Got them plastic lids when the wind blows over it. So I'm going to go to the regular one, I don't even have nothing to do with the zoning board. But if they're going to be doing food waste, it's going to be more. There was a rats' rat factor. I ain't seen no rats, raccoons, possums, and animals I ain't never seen.
You know, this guy, and I should take them out in the curfew, and I was thinking, "Oh, you're a house is filled with cats and woods."
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, we got animals standing on there.
You say, "The board, yeah, this is great, your kids will perhaps some places though." Now, I agree with you, Tom. Here's the police department, they know me by name. Going up, the trash trucks coming two o'clock in the morning, boom, boom, with the dumpsters, stick them up and drop them, boom. There's the one time, the girl opened the door, "Why you wanting to do it?" That's what I wanted to do. Vision ordinance in Runnymede, it's been on a book night, uh, seventy-five A. No trash collection in Runnymede at the ten o'clock at night. But it was allowed. Three different trash companies, now, they get a different guy to do their dumpsters, it's going to be four. We got two different sneaker companies. One does the Acme lot, one does the strip stores. They were coming two, three o'clock in the morning. Was told, "Oh, why you wanting to do it, they got no, there's no cars." Seventy-five A, can't do it here at the ten o'clock at night. Fifteen years I called up, came to court one time. Every, because they would take it. Every time I said, "I'm going to put a complaint in, hot game, weapons bill, give them warning." "Oh, it's their first time." And we thought it was going to be the first time.
Well, again, what you're talking about now is very valid on its, on its face, but that's, again, not in our purview. I would ask Mr. Knight, um, Mr. Knight in the back, are you familiar, could you come forward for one second?
Sure.
Just because, John, I want to, I want to address something that you brought, because it is, it is within Mr. Knight's purview, not without, within ours. Are you, are you familiar with the Capping Mondello's site, they not have a CDC trash enclosure?
I don't believe they do, the dumpster.
Okay. So, I mean, most...
In, in response to that, the, the other premises has been taken before previously, will be attracted.
And have, have some requests that he, the man did put in a CDC enclosure of his, um, shelter?
That's, and I can't do other property things.
One of your original plans for the Schmitzville, every dumpster was supposed to be enclosed. It was on a plane, never had a foot in it.
Well, all we can really do is, um, you know, Mr. Knight tells that on a, on a day-to-day basis, he does go enforcement course. And he's sure, he's sure that you had the same plan, but we're trying to, we're really trying to keep our policy right on this application.
Okay, one more minute, sir. Only because that dumpster being so low and having a light plastic lids, and putting the... Back here, lids are open. Keep running regular dumpsters, just the ones.
No, I understand.
We're not on last door.
I'm not disobeying with you. I'm just, I'm just saying that that's just something that we, we really can't enforce this evening, but we're making Mr. Knight aware of it, and that's, that's what...
But I'm just saying with the zoning board, when that thing was originally planned with the planning board, they said, "Okay, we're going to put enclosures around trash can." Why would they never flip?
I can't answer that, maybe Mr. Knight get Mr. Beck and look at the plan, and...
I called about the trucks parked here running all night, a parked in five of them. It's US Express trucks.
John, what we're going to...
Okay, I'm done, all right.
What we're going to do is we're going to ask Mr. Knight to follow up on that with Mr. Beck, and we'll, and we'll see if, again, we can get you to answer all that, okay? And thank you very much for your comment.
Control the lawyer, remember, I got my main concern, and I know that that'll happen, the noise. Like I said, I don't want to listen to the machine going all day, work from ten o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, work from three PM to ten o'clock. I told the IRP at one time at the meetings, when they were doing the Acme lot with the leaf blowers, two, three o'clock in the morning, cancel all, call the cops, not an hour.
We'll try to work with the applicant on their site plan, see what you can do with it.
I told Jack, "It happens like if I came outside the meeting and ran a, a lawnmower, a leaf blower, said, 'John, you're getting in trouble,' so why any of the other people?" Uh, thank you for listening, take consideration, please.
Sure.
The noise, and you put your kids places up, but the other stuff that goes along with it could drive me crazy. I got the number on speed dial.
Thanks, John, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate everything.
Anybody else?
Thank you. I'll let you go.
You can go first. I'm sorry. That's okay, you go ahead.
My name's Ted Tasspo, I live at five sixty-nine Cherry Drive, in Miami. And I used to go to that Rite Aid, on a weekly basis for years in here.
And you told the little ladder?
And I'm a little concerned about the traffic area there, because I think we also have to bear in mind that a lot of people enter and exit, I've got part of a lot, from Barkford Road to the city act, or what used to be the Rite Aid. And I know that there was also the Dollar Tree that's there. A lot of people, as you're coming through, or leaving from the act room, there's, I noticed there's a lot of older people that are very sharp as well. And you've got to be really careful as to, and you've got to drive very slowly as you're coming through that part, that narrow part of the road. And I would also like to add too, that that was just a valuable, barely sized parking area, and it was just the Rite Aid. I just can't imagine the gentleman up here who wants to start this business here. I got a problem with the, the parking facility that's there. It seems to me it's kind of quite small, you know? And also, I would like to know what hours this would...
Well, we did stipulate the hours, Roy, and I'll, I'll repeat them for you, sir.
Yeah.
The hours of operation, and again, this is tentative, which also may change.
What time?
Three to ten Monday through Friday, and ten to ten on the weekends.
Ten AM?
And AM to ten PM on the weekends.
And... I'm, I'm just expressing my concern for the traffic, because the flow of traffic, as I said, people use that also as an entrance and exit means come from the path of going to Barkford Road. I would just, would like to...
Well, we get done with the public portion, Ed, we can certainly have Mr. Luzup's traffic study engineer who is here. Perhaps we can bring them back up, she did not testify yet, but if, if you would like, we can certainly ask her to come up and, and give some testimony as to how they plan to accomplish scandal in the traffic. And as to the parking spaces, we are a professional, at Mr. Pettit and Associates, they did take a look at that. And could you reiterate to this gentleman, are we within the criteria of what we need to have for what they're trying to do?
Yeah.
By, by ordinance?
For, for this, for this zone and retail use, the whole building, including the Rite Aid, plus the rest of the shops around the area, would require seventy-one spaces, and there's over a hundred. I haven't had a chance to count, but there are a hundred spaces in that, for that use.
One second, yeah.
Yeah. Now, are we talking about the parking facility that's directly right across, and what use did they, Rite Aid on? And, uh, the Dollar Tree?
Right, right in front of the Rite Aid, plus the retail uses that are neighboring that, that whole building. And one, there's two buildings on this area, there's the Acme, which is totally separate lot. And there is this...
So we're not talking about the parking area, which is adjacent to the haircutery, you know, and the restaurant there?
But I can technically...
That will also include that too?
If they're in the same building.
Okay, so now we've got more traffic coming in and out of there, parking, in addition to people coming and going, and old people coming in and out of the yard.
Right, but what we're saying is...
Jason, one of my...
What we're saying is, we actually, in, in reality, sir, we actually have approximately, I would say, twenty-five to thirty percent more parking by our standards, by ordinance, than is required to do what we're trying to do. And again, I don't, I don't want to keep hammering this home, but, you know, by law, we, we have to really, if, if they were not within our ordinances, if they didn't have enough parking for what they were proposing, then we can say to them, and we can mandate that they do something else. The purview of this court is to say, "The ordinance is such that you need to do A." If they're doing A, then that's what they need to do. If they, if they haven't proved a special needs or anything of that nature, I mean, it, it looks to me, by law, and by what our professionals have told us, that they've done the review of, of the plan, that they actually exceed what they're required to have. So we can't require them to have more than what is already required, when it already exceeds what's required.
I, I understand, and I was just kind of expressing the, the safety factor.
Sure, I, I appreciate that, I just, I don't want you to think we're not considering that, but...
And I, I also, I have to agree with that gentleman, too, that his fence line, people that, that the residents have lived on Sheffield Court, and there's about ten homes adjacent to the back portion of the house. And the fence line, they're back fences, literally twenty-five feet from the store. So if, if there could be some sort of a proposal that the, the provider of this gaming house, whatever you want to call it, could be soundproof in some way, that would be a comforting...
We can speak to the applicant about that, and after, you know, when we close the whole portion, thank you.
That's all, well, I have to say on this issue.
All right, sir, thank you so much. This man?
Hi.
Hi.
Rebecca Natus, six twenty-nine Gatmore. Um, I have a, a couple of comments to make. Um, the three staff members that, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but, um, that they're speaking of, is one of those going to be a security guard and two teenagers, and what is the qualifications of the security guard? I know that we have specials here in town that, um, don't get paid at the same rate as a traditional police officer. And I think that that would be a good idea. Um, the other thing I'd like to bring up, um, the mother of a sixteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, um, a sophomore... Um, the other thing I'd like to bring up, uh, the mother of a sixteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, um, a sophomore at Trenton, and every year, a paper comes home that says that the children cannot congregate on the corner where Frettelli's Pizzeria and Dunkin' Donuts are because of fighting, cursing, roughhousing, and alleged drug use. It's signed by the superintendent, Rupisi, and it's signed by Mark Diana, the chief of police. Now, these are concerns. The building holds a hundred and fifty people. Dunkin' Donuts only wants two people in there, two teenagers.
Yes.
So, those are my concerns.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that the staff needs to be over the age of twenty-one and, you know, it's a target that breaks. And that's why you don't hire police officers that are seventeen or eighteen years old. Because who's supervising? You need to have some sort of authority over these children.
No, sir.
The authority there does work. I can vouch for that because I did work in this school.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask the applicant to come back up as soon as we close the public portion.
Okay.
And that, that now that they've heard some of your concerns, um, we're gonna allow them to hopefully, uh, give some more testimony that will hopefully, uh, you know, address your concerns. And we appreciate you guys coming out.
And I think I need to count the hundred seventeen parking spaces because we just got through Christmas season and I am a Dollar Store patron and I will tell you that that parking lot was dicey at times getting into that Dollar Store. I, I have to question that hundred seventeen parking spaces.
Well, we, we can certainly give you a copy of the page if you'd like to see it.
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm very sincere, right? I do have a spare copy of the plan, um, if you'd happy to, happy to get it if you'd like.
Maybe I missed a few, but I'm thinking-
Open public being, you're, you're happy to see what we have.
Thanks for your time.
Rebecca, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Okay, then.
Hi, can we hear your name, please? It's Gina Sun and it's my husband, Mike.
Five seventy-two Cherryton Lane, Long Beach.
We, we basically live around the corner from the Dollar Store in New Acme and where the Rite Aid was. And, um, we don't think that it's a good idea at all because what it's going to be is an arcade and a hangout for the junkies. There's going to be drugs, there's going to be drinking, whether they get it from home or wherever, they're going to have it. There's going to be traffic like crazy around here because it's already crazy. When the Dollar Store has a lot of customers in there and it's mostly older people, the traffic is horrendous. Getting anybody out of there is a mess. You have to be careful because they drive through there like maniacs from the Acme to Hartford Drive. So, having something like these people that they're going to put in there is, I think, the worst thing that they could put. Put something in there that would be detrimental to the whole neighborhood, but putting an arcade, which that's what it would be, would be the best, the worst thing that they can do because, um, it's going to cause a lot, a lot of problems. And the police cannot handle anything that would go on over there. Like the gentleman said, there's not that many policemen on the street at night. And sometimes you call the police and, I mean, they don't come right away because they're just either not on the street or they, you know, they're doing something else. So, it's not a case of where you call the cops and they're going to come because, you know, it's, it's just, it's not a good thing, you know? For the neighborhood, for any of the older people, senior citizens that live in that area there and there's a lot of them. I mean, they go, they go to the hairdresser, they go to the meal place and, um, the Dollar Store. And I don't know about those parking spaces because when there's a lot of traffic going in and out of that Dollar Store, there's a lot of tra, a lot of cars in that lot. And there's only maybe some on the side and there's some in the back that are empty. But other than that, the parking spaces in the lot itself are usually pretty full. So, I don't know whether those cars, you know, are supposed to be going.
I don't know what this board's going to do, what decisions they're going to make. I have twenty-five years on law enforcement in the city of Philadelphia. I've known about arcades. I've been sixteen years here at the Kian and County Innovation, okay? So, I'm familiar with law enforcement and I realize that this becomes a problem for law enforcement. You expect law enforcement to take care of it. It can be everywhere. This board knows that. We don't have the police to do it. That's a fact, okay? And I don't hold that against them. They do a good job parking and these people do a great job as a matter of fact. But you have to realize you put young people in there. I, I've seen these arcades pop up and this is, this is where the law enforcement comes in, these corner operated machines. I mean, maybe people on the board are not familiar with it, but I am, okay? I had to live and deal with this thing for twenty-five years. Now they come here to live in the nice community of Long Beach and you still a great job. And it's great. You have the Acme, you have schools in here. I, nothing against these people, it's not a personal thing. This is a business thing where they, they want to open up a business. You're not going to move these kids. And like my wife said about that lane, no car in that no parking lane. Now, what are you going to do, call the police? Police are doing numerous things. I mean, the, the only thing they're going to do is say, look, please move your car. Kids want to jump in, remove it. As soon as the police leave, boom, the cars go back. And that, and if you go there and look, or whoever's going to go there and look, if you put a car in a no parking lane, which a lot of the times people who go into the Dollar Store, the light goes in, your husband sits in the car, because they're seniors, and you wait and you, you're living there because they're neighbors. You just go to there and you go around them. These kids are not going to do that. These young people, these doing what you want and you'll have to live with it after you do it. But that's what's going to happen. You're going to have nothing but problems around it. And as far as the trash from the inside, it will come outside because they'll buy stuff out of the vending machine and then they'll throw it outside. Hey, I don't have to clean it up, okay? It's not my business to clean that yard, but that's what will happen. I mean, I don't take the nonsense from you. These other people are afraid. They're going to live by it. They don't have the background I have. They don't have the life I have. But this is, I mean, and this is what it's about. But I'm here to complain about it and hopefully the board will take another consideration. It'll take my background consideration. Well, maybe this guy knows what he's talking about. Look, I made a hundred and sixteen dollar restaurant in one year when I was working, so I know what the heck goes on. And these gaming coin-operated things, you want to bring it into the neighborhood, do it. Live with it here.
No, we're the ones that are going to deliver it.
Well, the board will live with it too.
But, I, we're, we're the ones right in the neighborhood, the area there, they're going to have to deliver it because we live right around the corner, literally, from the Dollar Store in New Acme. And I love it there because in winter time when it's snowing and ice, I could walk to the store. I don't have to worry about driving and getting in the car and I could walk. And that's what's so nice about our neighborhood. And to put something like that in there, it's, it's going to ruin, it's just going to ruin the whole neighborhood. So, you know, that's just my opinion. Thank you for that.
Oh, you're most welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application? I seeing no one else wishes to speak on this application, I make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting application.
Sorry.
Motion to make is sent in to close the public portion of the meeting on this application. Mr. Luzup, you heard the, uh, comments from the audience. Um, we have, uh, concerns of loitering. We have concerns of violence. We have concerns of no proper zone. Uh, we have consuings, uh, we have concerns of noise. We have concerns of traffic. Uh, we have concerns of drug, road, alcohol, and we have concerns of who is going to be handling the security. So, um, I know you have a traffic study engineer here. If you'd like to better testify, it's up to you, but if you would like to share your comments-
I think it would be appropriate, again, if the board were inclined to grant the interpretation. Obviously, we would require to come down-
Speak into the mic, will you?
For site plan approval. Uh, it would be at that point that I'm sure my client would have no objection to submitting a traffic report. However, I would just point out to the board and particularly to the audience that this is not vacant, wrong ground. This is an existing commercial center that was previously approved by the board, um, not only with respect to issues of parking, traffic circulation, but more importantly drainage, lighting, landscaping. Again, my client does not own the facility. My client will be a prospective VC from the owner. Um, however, there are a few points I would like to address aside from the fact that, once again, we have a fully approved site plan that was approved by this board. Um, with respect to issues of noise, this is not an open arcade in the mall where obviously you would have an overflow of noise. This is an entirely closed facility, uh, you know, unlike a boardwalk or, again, an open arcade in the mall. With respect to the employees, um, my client confirmed that there would be, in fact, three employees on-site during any particular shift, each one of which would be over twenty-one years old. In addition to the employees, there is a plan to have security on-site during the hours of operation, um, at all times. Again, it is not my client's intent to place a burden unnecessarily on the police force in the beginning, but this was rather a matter that was part of the unique business plan that we had in place that we're proposing before the board. And with respect to trash, it's my understanding that, uh, the owner has represented to my client that the, there are street sweepers that maintain that site at least three times weekly. So, again, we would expect that if my client were a tenant, that that service would continue as well. Um, I won't address nor would I take appropriate issues of the restaurant and food waste. Um, we are not providing, you know, food service.
Right.
Again, any, um, beverage would be provided by way of a vending machine.
That, that site plan, we can certainly address the, uh, request for trash receptacles out in front of the arcade for children who might be taking a soda can outside with them. We can certainly address that. When we do get the site plan, we could require them to have extra amount of trash receptacles outside of their particular building to deal with soda cans, potato bags, things of that nature if they are not already in place.
Can you, couldn't we, uh, put a sign on the door inside that says, no food or drink allowed back out? If you bought it inside?
Again, I think these are all valid and reasonable points, not only from the board, but more importantly, the residents. We obviously want to be good neighbors. It's not our intention to be a burden upon the township or the residents. Um, however, we would respect the request that the board grant the interpretation that is a permitted use. We would defer the site plan issues to a later hearing where we would provide the board with a current, um, survey of existing conditions that would enable your professionals to, um, inspect the site, but more importantly, the building, uh, which would be accompanied by a traffic or circumvention report.
And do you intend to hire a one of the special police officer or you want to have your private security?
I, I'm in the process of pricing that though, so I am not committed to one or the other, but it would either be an outside security company or a special assault.
That would be on-site, on-duty-
On-duty.
Every hour of operation.
Every hour of operation.
Okay. I think it satisfies a lot of my questions. That was, going through your rider changes commercial use application last week, I was going through that. Uh, that was one of my notes as was the ratio of occupancy of kids was going to be per employee and if it was going to be a security supervisor there, you've answered that. Uh, you've answered the question of hours. You've answered the question of, uh, not serving food. We just talked about trash receptacles. We talked about loitering. Is there, is there anything else anyway?
The, the only reference I had, I got my son to look on a computer and there was a, uh, game one gaming center in North Carolina Parkway Barnet or something like that. Anyhow, they, they advertised birthday parties, pizza for the kids. You can rent a character to come dance around at the birthday party. They advertised three different levels of weekly rentals for any game that you wanted to play. And they started at forty dollars a day to two hundred dollars a week. You know, and it looked like a pretty high-end operation as far as that. I don't know what the neighborhood's like there, but, you know, but I don't, I don't have two hundred dollars a week to spend just doing games.
No, and, and we are not affiliated with anything in Atlanta, so it's not the same.
But it had the same name and it, the, the actual, the actual logo, like they use like the Subway with their sign, Coca-Cola. It wasn't the same kind of sign that you use in your operation.
Uh, how many facilities do you currently operate? I haven't produced signage yet, so I don't know what sign you're talking about for our-
The game one sign and, and you're on the, and higher letters next to it said gaming, gaming center.
Yeah.
And it was in North Carolina.
Not the same company.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I stand corrected.
How many facilities do you currently operate? This will be our first. This is the first? Yes. Okay. Uh, do you have any experience in this type of business? As far as entertainment, no, not as, as far as the games, no. We have had work with other companies, uh, as well as at Sinhu Supplies, the games, that have done games across the country. Uh, we're following their format and how they set up other arcades. Any arcades in the area that we would be familiar with? They do majority down the shore. They also do Fun Flex in Cherry Hill. Um, majority of their lines is shorter. Do you have any age, uh, minimums? No. But there is also, if you live in the suburbs, there's also younger children games as well.
What about requiring a child under a certain age to be accompanied by a parent?
Yes, if the parents are dropping their children off, they're going to get a wristband walking in the door and they will not be allowed back out of the door without a wristband.
Or are you going to allow, um, five-year-olds-
Someone similar to Chuck E. Cheese.
I guess what I'm getting at is, are, are you going to allow five-year-olds to be dropped off at the curb without a parent in this left area?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. So, there's going to be a minimum, a minimum age where they have to be accompanied by a parent.
Right, and we will follow the state guidelines, which whatever age they could be left at home would be the age that they would be allowed to be dropped off. The state in New Jersey has a little school team.
Very, very good. Anything else?
Um, well, I, after hearing from the residents, I, I have a different opinion. I mean, I, I know that if it would go to the zoning board to determine the use, that myself in the neighborhood don't have anything to say. But I tend to lean that this board maybe should review this a little more seriously as a, you know, as a use variant. Um, should we, should, once again, maybe send notice out or do it. I know I was just asking for an interpretation and I, I agree that the, the ordinance isn't designed to specify every single application. Um, but I understand that the ordinance was written by, by counsel on this board and it left out gaming in this sense and maybe there was a reason. And so, maybe that this board needs to think that a little more seriously. I understand that during the planning stage, uh, we could require certain things, but I, I think that this verbal getting over the use, the use variants is, is very important. Uh, this is correct. Once we allow this, we cannot take it back. So, I, I, I'm a little more, a little more concerned. People who live in that neighborhood have, they have a right to have it.
I, I would just point out, counsel, that, that the notice requirement would not be different from what was provided.
Oh, I understand.
You see, every resident that was on the list was properly notified and given an opportunity to appear to see it.
Yes.
So, that aspect as far as-
And they did appear and that's one of the reasons I'm concerned. I, I really came in with much different idea about this and, um, hearing from the people who live directly behind this commercial property, I understand their concerns. I do. I, I was thinking more of a Chuck E. Cheese type of facility.
And that, if you look at the pictures, that is more like a Chuck E. Cheese facility.
But, um, you know, that's not exactly what is being proposed here, you know, about birthday parties and things like that. And I think this board would agree that is we did not propose birthday parties. I don't.
This is not a party center. This is purely a gaming and arcade facility. Um, there were a lot of, you know, misquotes as far as what a resident heard or not heard.
I see.
Our full application was presented not only within the written material, but more importantly, our verbal testimony to see. This is not going to be a party center where, again, a facility that serves food and beverage. It is limited exclusively to gaming and gaming facilities.
I'm sure my son would, would enjoy it, but I, I have, I have concerns of it, I do. But I think this board maybe needs to look at this a little more seriously.
Is there anyone else that has any questions or concerns? I mean, now, again, um, I guess David, you can expand upon this if you like, but if we do grant them the interpretation that this will be a permitted use, um, that would in no way allow them to go forward with the application until they came before us with a site plan we would have to approve.
Well, I, I think Mr. Luzup put that on the record that he would come in with a more formal, uh, site plan application.
Well, which means, which means if we don't like the site plan, we can deny the site plan, basically. If, if we have a problem with the site plan that they don't agree to, they don't get site plan approved.
Well, we, we have a petition too. I don't know if you can do that, Mr. Trump, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if, if they-
Good, if they met the criteria, the engineer criteria and it, you, you could-
If they met the criteria, the engineering criteria, and you couldn't deny the site. Right now, we know there, even though some of the public, our residents might not agree, but apparently there's a hundred and seventeen parking spots there, or a hundred and seventeen parking spots that would be available, where this site really only needs, I think you said Brian, what, seventy-one? So I would say that, yeah, they could submit the formal plan, but if it's in accordance with our engineering standards or what's required, you really couldn't deny it. You could, you may be able to put conditions on it.
That's what I meant to say. Conditions that they would need to fulfill. I mean, we obviously, we have residents that are concerned and we obviously want to try to do the best that we can to be fair and equitable to the residents and to the entity applicant. At this point in time, we don't have any information on the traffic other than, or we have no parking spots to handle it.
If you did make a determination that it is a permitted use, then remember that it's a permitted use in any other of our commercial zones.
What?
So that's, you know.
Can't do spots in.
Can't, you can't do that. You can't say, well, we did it for here, another applicant come in for maybe one of our other zones and say, we went out, geez, that arcade place is doing great, you know, it's fine, we want to put one now on Black Chris Pike. Well, how do you deny it? You can't because you've already made a determination that, yeah, it would be permitted. So even though the ultimate goal, even on a use variance application where it looks like may, this may be approved, at least then you've designated it's approved for this one particular occasion.
And that's one of the reasons I tend to, you know, the mayor myself said, step down, you guys look at this as a use variance, and that it would only be if it was approved only for that one. And then maybe, you know, but I agree with not being able to put any stipulations, there's no real site plan work, unless you've done nothing. It's inside the four walls of the building.
It might not be as an intense use as what other uses, that could be, you could have a bar and a restaurant in the same place. So it was a restaurant, so you could have, you could have a bar and a restaurant there. You could have a movie theater there. Okay, so which would, you know, which, you know, appears to be more of intense use of what they're proposing as far as crowds and, you know, noise and things like that, but they're the things you got to consider.
Yeah, the public portion's closed.
I know, but the area, how come these two areas are regulation?
One minute, hang on. Mr. Rowan, the interpretation that Mr. Kapatis was just referring to is that if we deny the interpretation and we make them come back for a use variance, it would be a dislocation only.
That's correct.
Okay. So that in and of itself would give us some protection against having arcades pop up all over town, but that's what.
If you gave the interpretation that it is a permitted use in the commercial district.
Then it's a blanket.
Then it's, you've made a determination.
Right.
Somebody else in a different area of the town could come in and rely on that.
Well, I would respectfully disagree from the standpoint that I do not believe particularly under case law that that would provide a blanket approval for any arcade or gaming facility.
Not the right, not the right. We didn't give a bunch of approval.
I think we, I think we presented testimony that this is not a chain operation. This is a very unique niche business that my client is proposing, that if another application or a similar approval were required to come before the board, I do not believe that they could necessarily place any great weight on the fact that my client was approved. Each application would be viewed separately and independent on the merits.
Well, we just may have a, you know, a different philosophy on that. I think it would be, and I agree with you, it doesn't mean it's automatic, but I think it would be, it could be.
Because we're making an interpretation, as you're asking us to define what the ordinance says.
I'm asking the board to again, to carefully look at what uses are permitted within the commercial district. And your engineer has clearly outlined and articulated what those uses are. And in general, they are retail and service style establishments, of which my client's proposed use clearly includes encompassing. It is not specifically a retail sale of goods, rather it's a retail sale of service, that service being time, time at a particular gaming console or gaming center. So again, I believe it fits in, you know, the four corners of your ordinance as far as what you overall intend of the commercial zone, which was to provide an outlet for residents to access retail services, goods. And again, there is no ordinance that would encompass every proposed commercial use. This is a very unique and niche business and our law provides the power of boards to make interpretations of what additional uses would in fact be permitted within a particular zoning district, not necessarily commercial. It would include any other non-residential zoning district.
Are we ready to vote on the change of use application as far as whether we're going to allow them to, require a use variance or not? Mr. Rowan, do you?
Well, you could take an informal poll, I mean, if you want, I mean, shoot the numbers field.
Okay. Mayor, vote in.
I'm in.
I vote to require a use variance.
Dickerson?
I can cover the chairman.
Bushy?
Yeah, I agree. I think that she has.
We can't hear anything back here.
I would just like to say, I understand everybody's concern. I've been in this town for twenty-some years. Kids, if they're going to do stuff, they do it anywhere. We, even the girl sophomore.
How about your backyard?
They found beer bottles and things. I happen to feel that this might be a step in the right direction to have them go someplace where there's people watching them. Having said that, having said that, I feel very strongly that they should come before us and make an official use variance request.
Ron?
I'm going to agree with the rest of the board that they come before with that.
I agree with the rest of the board coming forward.
All right, well, it seems that the board is in agreement that we'd like to see you come back and request a use variance for the edification of the public. That's going to make a little redenewal and, you know, they'll come back and they have heard your concerns and, well, let's look at it again, hopefully next month they're ready to go and go from there.
What's that? They're saying that the use variance is required.
Thank you very much. You're welcome, thank you. Is there any other guy who might need to adjourn? Yeah. Mr. Rowan, do you want to explain any of it in case you don't understand?
Folks, what they can, they're going to do now is they're just going to make an application for the use variance. You'll all be redenewal and you'll come back and you can express your same concerns. Okay, now the board can still make a determination at that time to grant the use variance, you understand that. Doesn't mean that they've been denied. Okay, so I would envision that a, Mr. Luzuk will do a formal notice of a use variance. At the same time, he will probably make his, a site plan application, ask for certain waivers, and then it's going to be a formal application.
Could I ask more questions?
Now, really, the public portion's open and there's, there's no application now before the, for, if you want to wait till the end, there's another, there's a public portion that you can make comments. We have another, we have another applicant that has to, we have to move them forward to.
All right, thank you all for coming. The next matter of business would be some communication with the advocate for the Butler Group.
Good evening, Master Mayor, first members of the board. Jeffrey Barron, I'm representing the Butler Group. We lay a solace in November when we presented our application, we put on all of our testimony. You may have some questions. I've been doing this for forty years and it's my experience that when you let a board think for two months, they come up with things that didn't come up on the first meeting. My guess is, and I might be wrong, but you may have some questions for us. We did leave the meeting talking about reduction in, and I said to you that I would consult with my client and I would be able to, at the next meeting, discuss it. In fact, I said.
Mr. Barron, excuse me, one second. Mr. Rowan, um.
Um, yeah, this is a continuation of our, yeah.
Who's somebody up here, Mr. Barron?
I'm sorry. Okay. How's it going?
Right here, we're discussing it, you guys can't be perfect.
Yeah.
Counselor, come in, I'll tell you something.
Huh? Oh, I get it. What?
Okay, just, just a moment.
I agree. In fact, they're talking about. that they would be, the first court to hear is if we deny it, so they have to exclude themselves from hearing this testimony. Mr. Fullerton, who is a member, also is stepping down. He is allowed to hear testimony, but he has been in the two-hundred-foot perimeter, so he is not allowed to vote on this application, just so you know what's going on. Mr. Barron, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. At the last meeting, we talked about numbers and the chair asked us what we were willing to do, and I specifically recall saying to you that I would recommend to the client that we go to ninety-two units. We've been here is that no matter how good a lawyer may be, clients don't always think they're as good as they think they are. And so I could not get my clients to agree to that kind of reduction. I'd like to go over with you what had been envisioned for the site and what we did before we came to you, and then I'll say, well, we are agreeing to do in terms of reduction. The very first drawing that was done on this site was for a hundred and thirty-four thousand units. When I saw that, it was seven units per acre. I indicated to the client, and I'm not trying to testify, I'm just trying to give you some background so you can understand where we're coming from. I said to the client, I don't think that that's going to be acceptable in running. Been there before and I think that's two deaths. To give you a frame of reference, that would be seven units per acre. Your ordinance permits three units per acre, so that would be more than twice what you permit. We revised the plan and reduced it, the plan by twenty units, and that brought it to a hundred and fourteen, which is what is currently before you, a hundred and fourteen. That's a reduction of fifteen percent. By the way, I could have made it look like it was a bigger reduction by changing the numerator and the denominator, changing the denominator to what we're asking, but I didn't. I used twenty units over a hundred and thirty-four, which is what we were thinking of doing. That reduction is fifteen percent, so we did a fifteen percent reduction before we ever put our foot in the door. We now have a hundred and fourteen proposed. My client will agree to reduce the units to a hundred, which is a fourteen-unit reduction. That reduction is twelve point three percent. So in essence, we've reduced it both voluntarily, well, always voluntarily, by twenty-seven point three percent. We, and we are willing to do that. We can't go to ninety-two because that would mean we reduced it fifteen percent to begin with, and then we would be reducing it twenty additional percent. And from an economic standpoint, we just can't go. It will not work economically. So we are trying to meet the board, as the chair said, somewhere in the middle, a hundred and fourteen is what was proposed, ninety-two is what we hope to get. We're giving you more than halfway, but it hits, we can't do any better than that. And I just want to be candid with you. If I told you what my client wanted me to do, it looks like arguing, it was like saying, well, we've got a hundred and fourteen, and you say no. And I said, well, we've got a hundred and twelve, and you say no. And then I say, well, we've got a hundred and ten, and you say no. I'm not going to do that. I've been doing this too long, you've been doing it too long, I think we have mutual respect, certainly for your professionals as well, and that's, that's not going to be productive. So we would revise it to a hundred, obviously, we made a site plan application, if we get a use variance propensity, we don't need a use variance. Let me clarify a little bit. What you just heard was a use variance under NVSA forty-four fifty-five D seventy D one to use variance. We're asking for a density variance. It's a different standard, it's a different section of subsection E of the compact. So we're not asking you to let us do something we're not permitted to do. I want that to be clear because I noticed a lot of people have left. I suspect that they heard use variance and they're thinking, this guy needs that too. No, we don't. Count houses are permitted. We made a presentation, I'm not going to belabor what our planner said, but I do want to drive one point home. Your ordinance, and this is why I believe, and I mean this most respectfully, that no court could ever abdop your ordinance for this reason. You have, you allow count houses. Your zoning is three per acre, that's what you allow, three per acre, I write. That means that the rest of it is open space. And you remember at the last session, I presented testimony and Mr. Rowan agreed with what I told you, it's along the Jersey, you can't require open space anywhere. You cannot. No board, anywhere in the state can, except for a planned unit development, which is, is not, just a subdivision. As a result, you're requiring almost forty percent of the site to be open space is impermissible. So I don't have any doubt that we're entitled to, and I'm sure you have concluded that from my demeanor, usually most people say that, that I have no doubt that we'll get units. What we tried to do, and we had done, is come between the three units per acre you permit and the seven units per acre my client wanted to do, and we're fine. And that's, that's really what this is about. And I, again, I'm not going to reargue what we've already told you, I just wanted to make that point clear because it is a deficiency in your, it's nothing you had to do, anything to do, but it's what, what we have to do. We ought to.
What's the price range that these units were going to?
Right now, the anticipation is below hundred, they have to, low hundred plus thousands, so let's say a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. That's ten house units.
Was there any dedication for low-income housing?
No, we are not planning to do any low income, we're not planning to do any Section Eight, we are not planning to do any subsidized housing, we are not going to be planning to do anything except market rate units, market rate.
And not build that to rental, you're building in the.
Building the home. Building the home.
And we're de-restricting them so as that the garage never become living space, they can never put a fourth bedroom where.
We're counting that as part of our.
That would be part of the planning.
That's our, well, we did discuss it, that's part of our IRS.
It was here last week.
We have to have two, we might even need more than two, depending on bedrooms, number of parking spaces, and part of that will be the garage, which will not be able to be converted to any other use. I guess they could come in front of you and they could ask for a use variance, and you could say, we're going to park the other car. But no, we're not proposing to allow any use of that. And if you want us to be restricted against future use, I said we would and we will.
I think, the chairman and I indicated to Jeff before this meeting that the concern of the, one of the principal concerns of the residents, I think one of the, of the board was the traffic impacted, it's going to have on the, on our residents.
Neighbors.
And the board had indicated.
And I think that's the intent of everybody, even some of the residents who oppose it. I think their intent is, as you just heard on something else, they don't want to avoid to somehow harm their style of life of living, and we agree to that. So we will, we would be-
And as we talked, Jeff, that's one of the concerns of the board-
Sure.
-for the residents, that we know it's going to be an impact, any development is going to be an impact, but we want to make sure that it's not a significant impact and detriment to the, and I think that's where the board was coming from.
We're very comfortable with Ms. Strom's report. You may recall that she did an initial report, and then Ms. Pettit had some concerns about that report, and one did some additional studies done at other times, and Ms. Strom did that. So, we have no secrets about the traffic we submitted. We're fine with having another professional review that report.
Just for your audience's verification, what Mr. Barron is speaking to regarding the traffic study report, the original one was performed in August, which was vacation time, not school time, and the applicant, upon our request, agreed to redo the traffic study at our request, at their expense, to be more indicative of what a typical school day, no-vacation day, peak hours would be. We have received that, we have passed that on to our professionals. Having said that, albeit, we had testimony from the traffic study engineer, we still want to be even more proactive and go one step further, and again, at the applicant's expense, have one of our independent traffic study engineers review their report, not do a random review of their report as to the actors yet. So that's what we're looking to do.
And we would request, the fact, the chair, that we receive a copy of the report that's submitted to the board so that we can-
Of course.
And I think that review's going to be done under your office, right, or John's office, Brian?
Correct.
Can John get a cost estimate of a review?
Yeah.
So we can notify Mr. Barron and his client? Jeff, you also indicate that you might be able to have a rendering tonight?
We couldn't get it done for tonight, however. But we will have, we will definitely have a rendering of the units available, so that the public can see what these will look like. And I think in terms of low-income, that kind of Section 8, I think it'll lay any fears that they may have once they see what these units actually look like.
Fine, at 100 units, what is that calculation per acre? I don't know.
It's five.
I think it's more than five.
It's 18.6 acres, Madam Chair, so at five per acre, I think you'll find that it's like 91 plus almost 92. So it is slightly over five.
Yeah. At 91, we were at five per acre, so at 100, we're definitely over that.
Yeah, slightly over, rather than below. Right? Right, it's going to tell us.
What was the total, Madam Chair?
It's 18.6 acres.
So we're at five and a half.
Right.
Which is, that's 85 percent over where our ordinance is.
Well, in all due respect, your ordinance will never be upheld, not with open-
I understand that.
No, we understand that.
And no, and listen, don't think I haven't had that discussion with my client. And my client's position is, there's a break-even point, that makes sense. I'm below the break-even point, but I think I can make it work, because I'll sell them for more than we were thinking of selling them, but I can't do, I can't do better than 100. I want to tell you honestly, if it's 100, I'm lucky I'm here tonight, if somebody else isn't here.
Okay. Well, that's a-
Brian, what kind of timeframe do you think it would be for this being? Do you get the proposal or do you get the review? Well, I'll get the proposal. I know John's spoken to somebody, I gave Shropshire one. I'm hoping that we have the number by the end of the week.
Yeah, we've done a lot of work on the developer side. You should know, and the public should know, because I agree with what Mr. Petrie said. I like everything to be out there. I like that everybody knows everything about everything. So, we have worked with Mr., I have worked with Mr. Shropshire extensively on many projects. He is a quality traffic engineer. I have no opposition, certainly to him doing it. I think David or one of, he has four suspects to work with. One of them could give you an estimate by the end of the week. If you call me, I'll give you the okay to go forward, because in a bowl is to move it along. We're getting to the spring. We'd like to get to a point where maybe we might be able to open a job this year.
Once we get the number, either myself or John, you can email everybody. Yeah, call, Jeff, right, you don't have to go through my ones.
And he has, you have the report. That other copies will provide them. I would think that he probably could prepare a review of the meeting, but I shouldn't-
Right, yeah.
We can't want to do one this yet, but I would give approval. I would ask the board to continue it to the next month in the event that we can do it.
Yes.
If we can't do it, we understand.
And Jeff, just once again, under regmat, but you're waiving any automatic rights of any approvals?
I knew you were going to get to that. And it's important, I was going to bring this up, and I rarely do. I'm filing for, I have filed for an automatic approval in Cannon-Burlington. The time to review this application is a little challenging. It was originally filed in June, then I amended it on July 19th as for use variance. There was no formal completeness determination, but it's 45 days from the day you receive it. It seems to me that your 120 days to act on the use variance probably began about September 10th, approximately.
Need density variance?
Because of the use variance, and everything else is carried with that. We, without, yes, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I was the one that said it is a use variance.
It's a use variance.
On the density variance, you have 120 days to review it. So that's really four months. So September, October, November, December, January, it's very close. And I was going to say to you, and I knew Dave would bring it up, that we might even be in automatic approval territory, but that's not our intent. We want you to review it, we want to get the best review. We know we're going to be coming back if you do give us a density variance for subdivision approval. So yes, we agree to extend the time for consideration by the board until the next meeting. If you can't hear it by the next meeting, it's perfectly acceptable to me if the secretary or Mr. Rowan calls me for a written extension beyond that date, and I'll be happy to-
Again, we just, and the reason why I asked Mr. Rowan to call you this week, I don't want your client paying for a whole bunch of professionals to come in here and sit, knowing that you were going to be waiting for the traffic study review.
No, let me tell you that it is very much appreciated, because I called the client and I said, "We needn't have anybody," although Ms. Drum called me and said, "I'm going to be there anyway, so I'll stick around," and I said, "That would be great."
She's already, Christine's not, no.
But great, but I said, "Kill the other client and don't kill my client."
I know where you're coming from. Yeah, so no, I appreciate that, but I just, I didn't want you bringing away your professionals because I knew you were not going to be able to move forward until we obtained our review of the traffic study. So I do appreciate you coming in of your own accord to answer any other questions that we may have.
It was fun listening to the first application.
Good, thank you.
That makes you, that makes you have some idea of what's fun to do.
Yeah. Is that true? No, we are up there. We will, after the traffic study, we'll reopen it before the public.
Just making sure.
Yep.
Does the board have any other questions for Jeffrey or even a traffic study engineer to support us? Some people writing this traffic study question.
So, February 12th, if I heard correctly, is the next regularly scheduled meeting?
What's that?
I thought that's what I heard.
February 12th, 2014.
So we would respectfully request that you carry the application to February 12th with my consent, that we will not claim any automatic approval or any other rights under the municipal land use law to approval or any other vested rights. Until that date, if by that date, the report has not been circulated, then I'll be happy to address a further extension by letter to the board, but if you'd like to see me, I'll come back February 12th, it's my birthday, so.
Yeah.
So I'll bring my birthday before you.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, thank you very much for attending the Zoom. Truly appreciate the time.
Happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year, sir. Communications?
Madam Chair, are you not, are you not going to listen to the public?
No, not this time.
No, not this, only after the, we review the traffic study, or traffic review for the benefit of the township. Once we do that, and that would be a public record too, once that's in, you folks could review it. Then if we have additional questions, we do that traditional testimony, then we reopen it back up to you folks.
But, but it's not going to be an automatic approval.
No, you just heard what Mr. Barron said.
We're waving any and by-
He's waving that right, yes, yeah.
No communications, Madam Secretary? Hang on, one meeting here, guys. Yes, Jeff.
Excuse me, at the November meeting, you said we didn't speak here. Because they had asked that we not be allowed to speak, and I know we said at the November meeting we would be allowed to speak.
Not, no. After meetings will be-
Madam Chair, may I just?
You sure can.
The law in New Jersey is that the public, you certainly can hear the public in your general public session, which is Mr. Rowan's that comes at the end.
Correct.
But there is no additional testimony that's being given tonight, and as you all know, the public gets to testify on what you hear. There is nothing being heard tonight, so that's the only reason the public should not be heard, because there's nothing new, and they've already testified. But, as you said, Madam Chair, and as Mr. Rowan said, they would be able to testify at the next meeting as to anything that we put on the record.
No, Madam Chair, but are we going to be able to talk without him being here? The last time, when we tried to talk, he says, "You're not going to bring up discussion if the gentleman is not here present."
That's correct.
Well, what's the purpose of having a public meeting afterwards, if they're not going to be here?
I'll stay. I'll be happy to stay.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
I'll be happy to stay.
You have to open up for the public, the public wants them to hear. I mean, we have a public portion, if they want to get up and make a statement, but they can't, they can't project them in any of our witnesses or any of the applicant witnesses. But you got to open it up. You have to open up.
Oh, go, go, now. I was just saying, I don't know.
But they can't talk about my application.
Right, right.
Because if they talk about my application, then as Mr. Rowan said, I can't cross-examine. And municipal land use law is very clear, I must have the right to cross-examine if they're giving testimony on the application. So, the purpose, as you all know, of the end of the meeting, public session, is to talk about generally anything that they want to talk about, but not applications that are being recorded.
Right. No sense then. It's no sense for anybody to go up there and discuss anything.
Well, listen, listen, this is a process. You have to understand that this is a process.
He's going to wear us out. He's going to wear us out, and he's going to have less and less people come in here to complain and, and, you know, argue his fact.
Listen, there's a process here for laws to follow, there's municipal land use laws. This is not something where we make it up as we go along. You understand that?
Yes.
The applicant has rights. We have to uphold the law. We cannot hear testimony from a matter where a gentleman from the public without giving the applicant the right to cross-examine them. His application is not being heard tonight, okay? When his application is being heard, then you will all have the opportunity to come in front of this board and speak your mind, and then of course, just like we saw Mr. Blazuk this evening, I called him up to rebuttal some of the complaints that were given by members of the public, which I very much appreciate. I thought all of you guys made valid points. I thought it was wonderful. I like having a forum. I'm not one to sit here and want to just put the hammer down and boom, boom, boom. There is a process going on here, and you all need to appreciate that we want to get it right. We're going to take our time, we're going to take as long as it takes to get it right, and we're lucky to have an applicant that is willing to work with us and not try to, you know, muddle, muddle the way through and push, push, push. They want to get it right, we want to get it right. That's why we're having basically a third traffic study done, okay? Yeah, we had one done in August, another one done in, I believe it was November or-
That's theirs now, that's theirs.
October, hang on, no.
No, okay.
Okay, and we're going to have it reviewed again this month. That's basically three traffic studies, because we want to get it right. So you guys in the public are going to have to be patient, and you have to be diligent. If you want, if you want to be heard on this application, I got to come back, Mr. Barron's got to come back, the planner's got to come back, traffic study, they all have to come back. This is not, this is not going to be taken lightly. This is the biggest application that this town has seen on this board for 15 years. This is the biggest application that's been in front of me in 15 years. I intend to do everything I can to get it right, and if it takes making people come in, making people come out, I'm not going to do anything to mess up the integrity of this application, including letting someone in the public speak when it's not proper. We're not going to do it, okay? We're going to, we're going to follow the letter of the law. Mr. Rowan is here, he's our solicitor. Mr. Barron is here, he's the applicant's listener. We have to go by the letter of the law and uphold the integrity of his application, okay? And if we don't, then we're making a mistake, and we're driving ourselves into town up for litigation, okay? So understand that we're not trying to tell you, "Don't come back." I love you guys being here, I truly do. I love the group being full. I'll sit here till midnight to listen to you, but it's not proper, and we're not going to do it right now, okay? And that's the reason.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Communications, courses.
So we don't have any money that needs to go to school yet?
We won't, we'll smart.
Another one, Marla here and Rowan regarding the traffic study.
Yes.
And the county regarding the running portrait center, within a letter stating that the letter has considered a waiver for further review of their course.
Okay. Any questions on the communications? I'm going to receive far communications. Okay. At this point in time, I'm going to open the meeting up to, yes, sir.
Resolutions?
Oh, you want to do that?
We have one resolution, Madam Chairman, that from our December meeting. It was for a preliminary file, and it's certainly an approval for the purpose of expanding the parking area at 169th Avenue, which is located in the Special Economic Development Zone. So we can, you know, vote to pass this resolution. Vice Chairman Dickinson, who is going to sign that because he was the one that chaired that meeting. So we have a vote on the approval of this resolution?
We couldn't, it was on the December.
Yeah, we heard this in December.
It was right in December.
And they had changed the, not the 12th.
No, we're talking about the, you're talking about Sherrington Lane?
We had a change because-
Now, the, this was, now, this was, this was, I think, was heard in December, Jim, because the review letter was dated November 15.
584 Sherrington Lane, correct?
Yeah, 169th Avenue, DPA 160 Rodney Associates.
That's Rodney Associates, but we heard, we also heard, we also heard 584 Sherrington Avenue. Sherrington Avenue was in December. 584 Sherrington Avenue was in December.
Was it in December?
Yes, it was.
All right.
I was not that eager, right?
I thought it was this one that was, that Dick had to sign.
Dick has to sign, because we did it last time.
Any questions on the communications? I don't receive public communications. Okay. At this point in time, I want to open the meeting up to, yes, sir?
Resolutions?
Oh, you want to do that?
We have one resolution, Madam Chairman, that from our December meeting, it was for preliminary final amendment to plan approval for the purpose of expanding the parking area at 169th Avenue, which is located in the Special Economic Development Zone, so we can, you know, vote to pass this resolution. Vice Chairman Dickinson, he's going to sign that because he was the one that chaired that, that meeting. So we have a vote on the approval of this resolution?
We couldn't, it was on the December.
Yeah, yeah, we, we heard this in December.
It was written in December.
And they had changed the, not what come on to-
No, we're talking about the, you're talking about Sherrington Lane?
We had a change in because of-
Now, the, this was, now, this was, this was, I think was heard in December, Jim, because the review letter was dated November 15th.
584 Sherrington Lane, correct?
Yeah, yeah, um, the 160, 169th Avenue, DPA, 160 Rodney Associates.
That's Rodney Associates, but we heard, we also heard, we also heard 584 Sherrington Avenue. Sherrington Avenue was in December. 584 Sherrington Avenue was December.
Was it in December?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, that was the time.
All right.
I was not that near, right?
I thought it was this one that was, that Dick had to sign.
Dick has to sign, because we did it last, but two do I can get.
We don't have the ones for, okay, I put this with this up.
Yeah, we're still waiting on Sherrington Avenue.
All right, okay.
Okay, I'm going to abstain because I was not at the meeting, but we need a, okay, and Mr. Thorpein will abstain, but we need a motion to adopt the resolution number.
Yeah, we're going to, for this year, we're going to, I believe, or I'm just going to you and I remember the, the resolutions, 2014, while we pass them.
That must be number eight.
Well, that's 2013.
Okay.
All right, so what I do, when I can do resolutions for 2014, I'm just going to automatically number.
Starting at on the rate, I didn't pass that in here.
That's, I'll call you to get that number.
Okay, do we need a roll call on that, David?
What's the-
Are you taking a resolution out?
Um, I don't have a resolution for some, but we can memorialize it, and then I can just send it in. I can fax it into-
If you would, if you would abstain, what resolution you would memorialize?
That was the resolution for, let's see, that was, that was the garage, this was the matter where a garage was already building the property, and they came in for a variance for the existing-
Mr. Toto?
Yes.
200DIL?
Yes, Toto, Toto or Togo?
Yes.
And, where we were going to give him a variance where 4.21 feet side yard, where a five foot was required, and we were giving him a rear yard setback for accessory billing, where five feet required to allow him, the existing one is only .3 inches of the rear yard. So that's what we approved, and we can memorialize that. And I'll just send in the resolution tomorrow, June conservatively.
Okay.
So we have to vote on it to-
We'll vote, we'll vote on it.
Yeah, you can.
What number, what number you want to make the resolution?
Uh, that would be-
For the record?
That would be 2013.
Right.
So we don't, we didn't give them a number.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to take a roll call vote on the resolution, and we are going to, I guess we just call it 564 Sherrington?
Yes.
584 Sherrington. A roll call on you?
Clay Hammer?
Abstain.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Sushi? Yes. Forward to?
Abstain. Who was that? Who was that, very honest?
None.
Yes.
None.
Yeah, abstain.
How many votes we get?
26 people.
Were you, were you here? How many, uh, I'm sorry?
Three said four, you will be four.
Yeah, Bill, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay, so we memorialize that?
We'll memorialize that, and I'll email that tomorrow.
Sir, that was not a variance or anything, that was just something that we had a hearing last month, we had to memorialize it.
Okay.
Someone, someone came in for a, a change in a garage last month, so the following month, we had to memorialize that resolution, that's all that was.
Will it be a hearing on that, after variance?
Because there were no variance, sir. It was, we had it, we had a hearing on it, and that was done last month, that, that application's done before.
It was approved then?
Yes, sir. Yeah. If you have any, if you have any questions, you can read, you can go on YouTube and look at the meetings on, on YouTube.
Are neighbors notified on it?
Yes, I have proof of service here. Right here is the proof of service. But you have to be within 200 feet, you're not 200 feet, not to be noticed, but yes, we had a proof of service, yes, they were.
You got to be within 200.
Okay, at this point in time, we will open up the good welfare portion of the meeting, and again, we're not going to speak on any particular application, but if you have something regarding something in the town that you'd like to hear it on, you're more than welcome to state your name. Yes, Rebecca, how's that?
I'm getting more lifetime in the 14 years I've lived here. Rebecca, 86, 29, Detmar. I understand the rules about the applications and things like that, but I'd like to point out to the board here that there are 97 homes that are for sale in our community.
That was what they wanted.
Not including foreclosures. Now, this is sketchy information, it's approximately 97. A good example is, I live on Detmar, my neighbor moved into, behind me, moved into an assisted living. Her home is listed for sale, 624 Andrea Road. It is listed for 120,000. It is the biggest property in Clubbers Farms, which is the traditional name of our development, although there's no signage indicating that on my unit, it says Clubbers. It is, so we were granted the easement, so it is over a quarter of the acre of public land, 300, one bit, listed at 120,000, and a one car garage, so it's the traditional split level. So it's listed at 120,000. So this is a challenge, you know, to move this real estate. I understand that we're, we've encountered functional obsolescence with those homes, because there's only one bathroom, a lot of them don't have basements, and a lot don't have powder rooms or a second bedroom.
Right.
So I'd like to point that out, okay?
Absolutely, thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
No, you're most welcome, thank you. Yes, sir?
Frank Cobb, 407 Sheffield. I had just a quick question.
Sure.
How did the traffic study done?
Mm-hmm.
For the, for both paths? But did you take into was counted, the amount of traffic that might exist for the archway that it was in?
Also, we can't, we can't talk about that application, sir.
No, I'm asking about the traffic study, not the application. Well, that goes with the-
That goes with the application, they have to come back, and they'll bring the traffic study.
And, but we're talking about that next meeting.
So we, as the township, I assume, paid for the traffic?
No, sir, yeah, I'm getting, pays for it, sir.
Okay. And so they have to get another one done?
Yes, sir. I agree to do that, sir.
Thank you.
You're most welcome. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
John Schmick, Foster City, New Jersey. I had a chance, John Schmick, Foster City, New Jersey. I had a chance to speak to Councilman aside, and he had told me that the board had appointed the solicitor, I named, of the FER, and not the firm, as your solicitor.
Yes.
So I thank you.
You're welcome.
I thank the board for that.
You're most welcome.
It's been a couple of months since I've been here, and I was asked to come back a while ago, but I was working on another project, and a meeting for a, same one as yours. The meeting, I think I went last time I was here, was maybe in February. The following meeting and the month after, your vice chair, I asked why I'd come to these meetings. And I did watch the, on Dan's blog, and to answer your question, because I'm an American citizen, and I have a right to speak at any meeting, and you, as an official, have an obligation, a duty, to listen.
You're always welcome, you know that.
So just wanted to answer that for your vice chair, in case we was confused.
You're always welcome.
Yes. So thank you very much, and once again, in regard to this solicitor, I thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year to all of you.